Estacata City Council meeting. I forgot to do the moment of silence here. So if you'll please just give us a few minutes for a moment of silence. Okay, we thank you for that. We'll now call the meeting to order if you'll please join me in the pliable region.
Say you can have roll call, please.
Councillor Hughes.
Here.
Councillor Lidkey.
Here.
Councillor McElroy.
Here.
Councillor Prokop.
Here.
Councillor Strobel.
Here.
Councillor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you very much for that. We had the first citizen and community group comment, I have one, but they want to wait till the second reading, so I will hold up on that.
Mayor. We did have one public comment that was submitted be from Luke and Tammy Spencer, but it is in your packet and it's just a written comment.
Oh, okay, all right, and you've all had a chance to look at that.
Actually, I want to speak to that, Mary, if I can.
Can we, can we read it out loud first before he speaks?
Actually, I'm gonna, no, I'd like to speak to it. Because otherwise I'll call point of word on it. The reason why is because we, there's, there's some bias here going on, and I really want to call it out because it's kind of disturbing. First of all, we don't have a consistency on putting public comment into our packets. We got a comment just a couple of weeks ago regarding an issue with the post office that someone sent in, it was not in our packets. But yet, it seems the last two attempts for comments to be put in packets, one for the Traffic and Public Safety Committee, and now one for the agenda here, both had to do with Ant Farm. It's looking very one-sided and biased, and it's not okay. So I think it's very important that we do not allow written in comments to be placed in the pack because we put some in and some not in. And I read the, the email that was forwarded. It doesn't ask us to even put it in the packet, it just writes a letter in. So I think it's absolutely unacceptable that we put some in and some not in based upon what it may or may not say. So if we're gonna put one in, we had to put them all in, and there's a lot to put in if we do that, and that's gonna start taking up a lot of time, especially if we're gonna read them. Versus if we don't put any in and we require people to come online and speak their mind, show up in person, speak, or if they don't want to speak themselves, send a representative to speak. That's what we have public community comment for. But allowing people to write in letters is just gonna build up, and that can be, you can get fifty letters in from people that want to write them in, and next thing you know, we're gonna be spending all day here reading letters. So I think that's a process we don't want to do. But like I said, moreover, with all the letters we've gotten in the last month, these are the only two that I've seen try to get put in the packets. So I think that this is a bad practice, I don't think we should read it, I think we should stop it now and not do it moving forward. So I've objected then.
So we got other public comment that they've asked us to put in the record.
This is the first time that I have got, so I'm not sure what you're referring to that wasn't put in the packet previously. Typically, if someone sends a comment and they ask it, excuse me, to be emailed, you know, to the council, they'll, they'll say, please send this to council. So we'll just send it to you, if someone specifically asks it to go in the packet, then, or to go to be public comment at the meeting, which hasn't really happened, my, I mean, it hasn't happened at all to me previously. And then the one, it was not put in the, in the Traffic and Public Safety Committee comment section because there was an objection to it. So I asked the person who sent it if they, if I could just email it out, and they said, sure, just email it out. This one, they said that they liked it in the packet for the record because they were spoken about at a meeting and they just wanted to be on the record. It doesn't, I don't believe, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we have to read these out loud. They're just submitted in writing and the council can read them as, but they don't.
Yeah, so not everyone's comfortable speaking in public. Just like there are people that aren't comfortable submitting written documents. So that's why land use and other hearings, we always give people the option of putting something into the record in writing or verbally, or a combination, sometimes people bring something in and want to speak to it. As long as all written public comment, so if, if we have, you know, not every email that people are gonna want, but if they say like, written public comment, then those should go into the packet because we have to give people the ability to participate in that manner. And we just need to be consistent and make sure we have them. And then if you guys want to address those, just like you could address verbal, then you certainly have that ability. I don't know of any city that reads every public comment out loud, but my other cities receive a lot more written comments than they do generally oral comments. It's not unusual, depends.
The letter I'm referring to was received on two twenty-one, twenty, two thousand and three. Well, I'm not gonna read their name out here. Twenty, twenty-two-three, sorry, thank you for the correction. Yeah, I'm reading the little tiny letters. But yeah, it was received in twenty-two-three. February twenty-first, that was not in our packets. That was not mentioned, but yet another one received isn't there. Can you understand what I'm seeing when I say the last two that have come in have specifically been about one scenario, but other ones are skipped over? And the thing is, I think I said, if we can't be consistent on it, then we shouldn't do it at all.
So was that sent to city staff or was that sent to?
It was sent to the entire council according to what was stated in here, plus our law enforcement and everything else.
Was it requested to be in the packet?
Yeah, well, the other one doesn't request to be in the packet based on what I read.
Well, Melanie said they specifically asked it to be put in the packet.
This one specifically asked.
Where did he ask that one? Because I didn't see it in the letter they wrote.
The, it wasn't in the letter. This one was via an email that I clarified, do you want me to email this to the council or would you like it to be for public comment? They wanted it for public comment. Though I believe the email that you're referring to was the first time that I had received that letter, and I believe the question was, let's talk about this. And the person writing it decided they didn't necessarily need it to be public comment at the council meeting. They were just gonna come and share, and then that could go into the packet for the Traffic and Public Safety Committee, if it's the one I'm thinking that you're referring to, which it didn't go into there either because the chair of the committee objected to it, and so I asked if I could just email it out.
Let me ask this one, do we, do we have a legal obligation to put those letters in there if requested?
Yeah. Because that's just like you now have a legal obligation to either make people able to attend via telephone or computer. We can't, we can't dictate how someone, other than we could have a form that says, you know, please fill this to your public comment on this form, but we can't say you're only allowed to do something in writing or you're only allowed to do something orally. We have to give different people the ability to participate in the manner that they're comfortable.
Okay, so.
But you could say that, we could say to submit a public comment electronically, you need to clarify in the re, re portion of the email, a written public comment. So like, we can say, if we can do ways to clarify how they want to, how they flag it for us, because we don't want staff looking at every email and then having to respond and say, do you want this in the packet? So we could say, if you want to make written public comment, please put written public comment concerning X in the re-line so that it flags it for staff.
Okay, that's acceptable. I'd like to see the email that they requested for to be in there because like I said, it's, it, the purview that I'm seeing is one-sided, I'd like to, I'd like to be proven wrong on that one, that's fine. I'm willing to apologize if otherwise, but that's what I've seen. And I'll publicly apologize, I don't care, but right now, what I'm seeing is once, is one way, and I'd like.
I think this is the first written comment that's gone into the packet.
Well, we got forwarded another one with concerns from a, from a chair of a committee that was, that was asked and to put it in there, and there was some rebuttal against what putting it in there. So that's what I'm saying, I'd like to, I'd like to.
I, I mean, that.
I, I just wanted some clarification on that, I'd like to see what was written for it, but if we can definitely put a process together for public comment that says, if it's supposed to go in the packet, do X.
So i- if someone wants, if someone wants something to go into the packet and unless it's obscene in nature or something like that, then it needs to go into the packet.
Yeah, and that, that's understandable, that's, like, so let's put a process together for that.
So if the chair of a committee is like, I don't want communication going into the packet, they need to understand that it's not their purview because when they do that, then we risk that it be based on their advocacy. So that, that someone's advocacy goes in because we like the speech, and others' advocacy doesn't go in because we don't like the speech, and that's what we need to avoid. So that's why we have to have a system where, to the extent we're going to get, and it doesn't sound like you guys regularly get written comments, which is good, less package to get through, but to the extent that that's going to change, we just have to have a way so that staff doesn't have to guess whether to put it in the packet or not.
Fair enough, and like I said, we, we get, we get emails all the time. And so that's what I'm saying is, let's get some clarity because it seems like only one's a cherry pick to be put in there, and that's what I'm talking about. That, like I said, that's appearance that's been, that I'm seeing, but I'd like to, I'd like to be proven wrong, and I'll be happy to publicly apologize if you want to send me that email, so.
And, and I would suggest we advertise this too, so that members of the public understand, because some people work, you know, some people work the night shift, and so they're not gonna be able to attend these meetings too. And so that they understand there's a way they could participate in public meetings and also make it easy for staff. So if they do want to participate, then at the top of the email, they write public testimony, and then it goes in, if it's an agenda item, it goes into that portion of the packet. If it's a general public comment, then it would go in this. And as long as everyone is aware of how to do it, that's what creates the least legal risk.
Can we just, can we just add a tab on our website that says, you know, for written public comment, click here, and then it, they can fill it out?
Yeah, I think that would probably be really helpful for me.
Okay, so we're going forward, the idea is to put a procedure in place to make this more apparent and easy to understand so we don't have any clarification issues down the road. All right, I think we're all on the same page on that one, and I don't have to read it because we've all read it, I mean, I read it.
Right, it's just, it's a written comment, so you don't have to read it.
Okay.
If somebody wanted to respond, but typically we don't respond necessarily other than thank you for the comment.
Yeah. Okay, great. Is everybody comfortable with that going forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're at the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. I need a motion on the floor, or if there's any questions, go ahead and.
More, that's a quick question, does this statement on there? So just out of curiosity, the prevailing wage, that, that sucks. But what would it, this, what would it have been if we didn't have prevailing wage on there, just out of curiosity?
We got a quote for just under fifty thousand dollars if, but it was not at prevailing wage, and we need to, this project requires that, so we had to turn that one down.
Just for the, just for the clarification for everybody in the audience here, anyone listening, we had a quote for a building to be put over top of our screw press, and you said it was just under fifty was the, was the original quote. With prevailing wage, it's eighty-six thousand dollars. So those who have a problem with paying the extra thirty thousand dollars in, in fees, you might want to bring it up to your state representatives, so just wanted to clarify that.
I have heard that they're working on increasing it from the fifty thousand dollar project level to, you know, adjust it for inflation, which would raise it up somehow. At this point, this is the law we follow.
Yeah, sucks. But that's all I.
Any other questions on the consent agenda going forward? All right, can I get a motion on the floor, please?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Yeah, first, I have a second.
Second.
First and second, all those who pay for say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much for that. We are now at Department and Committee Reports. So have any of you had your groups, so you're ready to, okay, I'll start off, thank you, Jerry.
I had my first meeting with the downtown Estacata Commission. They discussed their, their goals for the year, finalized their goals for the year, finalized their budget request. And the big thing that they taught, one of the big things that they talked about was the, this combining Harvest Fest with this new Oktoberfest. And it sounds like it's just gonna be a great event, free for everybody except for the beer garden area, won't be free, but all the, the booths and stuff, you know, it'll be free to get into that area. But it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty cool event, sounds like they have a, a lot of work in front of them, but like I said, it sounds, it sounds pretty, pretty great. The other thing that they discussed was, they started discussions on the converting the downtown Estacata Commission to the Economic Development Commission, just, just discussion around that and what that would entail, you know, going from just concentrating on the downtown core to supporting businesses all across the city of Estacata. But again, it's just early discussions on what that would look like, and, you know, of course, all of that is, that is our, our decision, that they're just discussing on what it would look like and what, how it would change the, the commission from, you know, that type of thing, so, but beginning, early discussions on that, I expect good things to come, you know, come from them. It's a great committee, really well put together, I really, I really enjoyed it, so. First meeting with them, and it was, it was a lot of fun, so thank you.
The DEIC met last Monday, they are again finalizing their committee goals. It's gonna include engaging with schools, churches, and unincorporated Estacata. They also have plans to collaborate with other committees, and we have a lot of goals that overlap, so I'm really excited to see what they can do.
Great, thank you, Jerry.
School board met, not really a ton to report on that end, but I will say that Director Shibahara had put forward that there's going to be a grant for future graduates for, I think there's going to be two grants, in her husband's name for grads who want to either go on to college or use that toward trade or something like that, so really, really cool. Very, not a, not a dry eye when that was being spoken about, so. And yeah, that's kind of the, the big news on the, on the school, they're just, you know, plugging away through the air. Yeah.
Mike?
I was, I sat in with the Traffic and Public Safety Committee, and, and I actually missed the Infrastructure Committee meeting, but I'll, I'll get a summary on that, watching that and bring it on the next meeting. The Traffic and Public Safety Committee meeting was very busy, and I apologize if I don't summarize portions of it, I tried to get all of it, but a member, a business owner came in from the food carts, speaking about dealing with thefts from people that they suspected were homeless people. They requested increased patrols and more street lighting. Cities, the city spoke to that they had communicated with PGE about a pole that's existing over there that could accommodate a light, and that they were waiting for information to come back from PGE. Sorry to know, anything been heard?
I haven't heard anything.
Haven't heard anything back yet. Another citizen came and shared that they were, a visually impaired citizen came and was concerned about the crossing of two twenty-four and would like crossings with appropriate devices installed at Broadway and Main as they cross two twenty-four. Just didn't feel safe crossing the highway there. Another citizen concerned with unreported crimes due to a lack of belief that something will be done by the police. Chair Moriarty informed the citizen that the committee is working with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office on Neighborhood Watch Training Program, and that they needed more volunteers to get the program training from the sheriff's office. So they, they need a certain number of people before they'll teach the training. City manager gave an update that the Facebook page for that committee is almost ready to go. And then Ryan Carpenter, the superintendent of Estacata School District, shared an update on the schools, and it was lengthy. One of the big things that he spoke to was the congestion issues, especially during pickup and drop-off times. He let us know that there's over two hundred and sixty-eight employees and nineteen hundred and eighty students that come into that area in the morning and the afternoon as they do pickups and drop-offs. They saw ten percent increase over the previous year for enrollment. They're doing everything they can to keep up with it and trying to come up with creative ideas to deal with when the buses are lining the streets up there. Spoke to crossing beacon on Main and Second being needed, crossing beacons on Main and at Estacata Middle School being needed, upgrades to crosswalks between the high school and Estacata Middle School. It was brought up that pullouts could be made to get buses out of the street to open up the line of sight. Need extra lighting immediately at the crosswalks between EMS and EHS. They've been having a continuing issue with homeless camps in the Ranger Woods where it's a surveillance issue for the schools, they're actually, the superintendent and members, faculty members are having to go into the woods to run people out of there, and they're leaving behind dirty needles, garbage, and other contraband in the woods that kids are coming across as they come through there, it was a big concern, and I'm sure, I don't want to speak for him, but it'd be great if we could come up with some solutions to help come alongside them with that. The school district appreciates the school resource officer and splitting the cost during the school year. They support, oh, something interesting I found out is that they support concealed carry at the school district, I didn't realize that. I thought that was amazing, they don't ask anybody who's, who's participating in that because they don't want the liability of it. But it was, it was nice to know that even if SRO isn't on site, that there are other people that are taking advantage of their second minute, second minimum, second amendment rights, and will be there to protect our kids in a, in a situation if need be. And the school's purchasing a new communication system to deal with behavioral issues within the school, and things that don't elevate to the level of needing an officer there, and it's gonna help communication throughout the school. It's similar to what the badges that they use to communicate in hospitals. So they feel that it'll be a safe way to communicate because they're concerned about private information about students getting out on a public radio. And there's a bunch more too, but I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. All right, thank you.
Met with the library board a couple of weeks ago, and just, they continue to do great activities with adults and the youth in our area. Encourage you to check out the Facebook page for all that they've got going on, but the, just great news there, continue to have big jumps in folks coming in, library cards, ebooks, audiobooks, everything is just on the rise at the library.
So we're splitting the DEIC, I wasn't able to make it because I had a big thing the next day, which I'm gonna split kind of that with you, Mayor Drinkwine, but Mayor Drinkwined, I made a trip down to Salem to speak with our representatives down there, and we had a couple of things on our agenda, was to, A, try to get some funding for the, for the upcoming project, and then I had another thing on my agenda, I want to talk to them about two twenty-four. So I'll talk to my conversation on two twenty-four, and you can talk to them about the other part. Okay, so they, I spoke to a couple of the representatives that are in charge of transportation for the, on the senator level in their committee, the Transportation Committee, who has a ability to work with ODOT, so one thing I spoke with them was about, because we don't have control over this light out here, it's ODOT, was to try to get them and get them moving on trying to update the, the lights for crossing. They all provide the audible ones in there, and I kind of explained to them about the issues. Give them some feedback on the crosswalks instead of pointing across the street, they're pointing towards the center. But then we also talked to them, the main thing I talked about was down here by, we're two eleven and two twenty-four, kind of meet up there by Jackpot, Jack, Jackpot gas station, and Amisiger and two twenty-four. One of the things he didn't know about was that we've, we've had several deaths in the, in the last year or so, and even I think there was a couple this, this year already in that area, so I was able to inform him on that, which really kind of spurred him. So I'm gonna try to communicate with, keep in communication with him, try to work on providing him some information, and he's gonna try to motivate ODOT to try to step up on getting something working on, on our two twenty-four, on those two intersections. We'll see what he can do, but he obviously didn't promise anything, but he's gonna do his best, so that's my part.
I also was there talking with Senator Bonham, who put me in touch with the Ways and Means Committee, which is, in other words, the ones that budget for the capital. And they informed me that if we wanted to get this money for the wastewater treatment center, that we should write a letter to every member that was in that commission. So we did that, the city was very gracious in that, they put together a letter. We shipped it out that same day to the chair of the Ways and Means, who put it to all the other members. So they've assured me that this will give us a better chance of seeing funding for that project, which is nice to hear from them that they're paying attention to Estacata and all we have going on here, so that was encouraging information to get. There were a lot of bills out there, I didn't realize the things that go through the senate floor. There were some different ones, there was a chicken bill, which is kind of interesting, considering we've been here as long as we have, we already have hens in the city and, and beehives, but this was a bill they're putting out to increase that so that people are looking more towards growing and culturing their own food throughout cities, so that was, that was very interesting. And then we had a duffel bag bill for our foster kids that are out there, that I don't know if you know, that when a foster kid is shifted from house to house, sometimes they use plastic bags, and they felt that that was degrading because it's, it's a black bag, and it makes the kids feel, you know, inferior in some way. So this duffel bag bill will put it so that they have to establish a bagging system to take the kids from foster home, the foster home that's much more dignified. And I thought that was interesting, and these are bills that you wouldn't think much about, but they were actually spending an hour on each one of these bills on the floor, which amazed me. I mean, I think some of the things that come across us when we're here in City Hall and what we go through, and for that one instant, these bills took that long to go over, and both sides were fighting it out over this, and I, I, I can't even imagine, you know, what they go through on a regular basis. But that said, it was a very fun and a great experience to be on the floor and be recognized to be Estacata and doing great work down here, and the fact that we're creating housing for people that's affordable, and they're very happy with what we're doing and the direction we're starting to go in, so, just so you know that. And that was my report, so thank you for that. Moving right along, we have the city managers' report.
Thank you. I have four quick topics, I'll try to make quick. The first one is I wanted to follow up to the question about the ammonia plant and how the violations that we've received do or don't relate to growth, and I emailed this out to you in a response, but I thought since it was asked at the meeting, I wanted to respond to Councillor Lidkey's question, and so right now, the question was how it relates, how does our ammonia plant and the violations that we've received relate to growth? And right now, we mainly have violations at the beginning and the end of our monitoring season, which is the summertime when the river flows are lower, that's when we are required to monitor the ammonia. And in the, it's the colder, wetter weather hurt, our engineer calls it the shoulder seasons, the beginning and the end, that wreck havoc on the bacteria that is in the plant, and so most of our, not all of them, but most of our violations happen in the beginning and the end, and this is a problem with the process. However, the, our growth will be a problem, and it, because when we go over five hundred thousand gallons a day, it can't treat any more than that, and so anything more than five hundred thousand gallons a day going through the sewer plant just goes to the river, it can't go through the ammonia plant. And our high flows are typically, you know, in the winter and, you know, spring, fall, winter, and then it's in the drier season that we're supposed to be doing this, but as we're growing, we're gonna be, we're gonna be over the half a million gallons. So the growth will not be able to be treated at that ammonia plant, so it's perfect timing for moving towards our new plant. And that will, it'll be a different process, and it'll be able to go ahead and handle the ammonia, no problem, so. Yes, question?
How, I guess during, during those months, you know, during those months, how, how close are we to that five hundred thousand gallon mark now, do we know?
Yes, I meant to, and I meant to ask Chris that, but we're, our summer flows are, are less than a half a million. They're, I want to say they're like a hundred and some thousand, so we're getting up there anyway, but I can't remember what the number is, I can find that. I could find that out, what our summer average flow is. Last summer, we had that crazy rain in, you know, June, I guess it was in June, it just rained and rained. So we had much higher flows, but I can look into what our average.
So the, the reason for my question is because we, we already have so many homes approved to be built. And I know that our certificate of occupancies of, you know, the, the rate has gone down, you know, quite a bit. But I just, I, I just want to make sure that, I, I just want to be assured that, you know, with the homes that we already have built, we know that we're a few years out on this, on the new wastewater treatment plan. With the, with the homes that we already have approved, I, I don't want to see us exceed.
I, I don't want to see us exceed that five hundred thousand gallon mark. You know, and just have that go straight into the river. Um, I just, I'd like to see what the, you know, with the, with the homes that we already have approved. Um, I'd like to see what the estimate, if that puts us, you know, if the, if they estimate that that puts us at the five hundred thousand. Or if we're still going to be below, um, again, we, we, we're going to, we're kept a few years out on that, the new wastewater treatment plant, so. Um, if not, I'd like to see um, some kind of. Temporary solution that we could put for, that we could, you know. That we could do if there's anything.
Now, let me look into that again, um, I think that's what's counsel, like he's concerned too, is that we're going to blow past that. Um, and that's what we are, so it doesn't, so our, our plant will treat. So we're not treating, putting untreated water into the river, it's just for the ammonia, uh, which is a newer um. A newer thing that we're supposed to treat for, so um, let me find out what our average daily flow in the summertime is and then we can. You know, see where we're at, it, it, um, and then we're also working on getting that, excuse me, the M A O with D E Q. Or um. That they will work with us on how we can manage that better until we have our new plant.
Um, well, let's say we have the calculations done and we figure maybe. Four hundred more houses and then we're, we're blowing over that number. Uh, since Peter's here, I want to ask him a question. Let's just say we uh, we, we figured four hundred numbers, four hundred, that four hundred number is our, is our number to shoot for. What's our legal options to, can we, can we stop issuing C O's if we need to? Until we get the new plant or what, what's our, what's our option here?
Well, the option that I've seen used uh most broadly is onsite retention. So really, when we're talking about wastewater, we have two types of waters, we're, we're talking about. Rainwaters that come down, so they don't have any absoinum, they may have some fertilizer because they may have gone over a lawn or something like that. Um, if you've seen subdivisions that kind of have a, a holding pond, that's because they're taking water. Basically. Rainwater out of our system, putting it into a onsite facility. And then it, it filters into the groundwater over time or what have you, so that uh, we're not getting the sort of um. The, those gallons into our sewage treatment plant because the goal with the sewage treatment plant is that it be. Um, treating sewage versus just rainwater. So that's, that's what I've seen in other jurisdictions um, is. On ti- onsite retaining of water, if for some reason that isn't feasible and. We, we would then, and there is no option other than limiting the number of houses, that's something that we would need to do. With um. With D E Q because we need to make very specific findings to have a moratorium. Um, and D E Q doesn't want cities to have a moratorium because we're in a housing crisis right now, so. Wh- they might, they might give us options um. And those options could be anything, I mean, the city of Primeville has a golf course because that's where they. Put their water, so I don't think D Q's allowing that anymore, but you know, some people have had some pretty creative means of doing it, but I would expect um. Onsite retainage of the water is probably the most likely thing, we'd see, yeah.
Is, is that something that would be addressed? When they're applying for the sub, because he referenced the s- certificate of occupancy. So we have subdivisions that have already been approved. They just haven't filed for their permits, is that something that would be addressed? Between being approved for a subdivision and certificate of occupancy? Or is it something that would be addressed at a subdivision application?
So ideally, um. If we reach the point where we need to do this, then um. We would go in and, and do a amendment of the subdivision, which you can do if it's less than ten percent of the units, it's kind of the, the general rule. We would probably need to give them credits, uh, they would probably need to give up a lot, maybe two. Depends on the size of the subdivision in order to do that kind of onsite. Waterwork. Um, or there are other ways we could do it, if you've seen cities where in the medium, they have. Basically a subterranean planter where water can flow into that, sometimes that's a less costly. Method, I mean, there are a variety of ways, if we're, if you guys are creative, there are a variety of ways we can. Kind of deal with the issues so that we don't end up in a moratorium.
And to speak to um Peter's comments about that, we are working every year on I N I, which is realigning sewer lines. So that water, groundwater isn't getting into the sewer lines, that would increase the flow at the plant and I, I'll also, I don't believe. We're attempting to be more restrictive than D E Q. Um, as far as a moratorium. Um, I don't think we would ever, I don't think we would try to be more restrictive, I could be wrong. Um, but Kurt, our engineer had said that, that right now D E Q isn't um. They're not placing restrictions because of the ammonia, um, it's more of the other things that we're facing with the plant and so. But we do, we do want to be careful about what we're putting in the river too.
Um, don't, haven't like all the sub, at least the majority of the subdivisions, I mean, I'm just going off of memory, I think they all have. At least one stormwater retention um.
It's pre- it's getting to be pretty standard.
Yeah, I think the majority of, of the subdivisions that we've approved have some sort of, is that what you're talking about, the, like a stormwater retention?
Yeah, I mean, the, if, in. You guys would know better than I would as far as, as how the water's being contained on site, but that's the trend is that. To the extent that it's stormwater, you contain it on the site, so it doesn't get into the system. Then the, the city can go through their systems with cameras, so you can see particularly during major rain events. Are there holes in the pipe or something that's allowing all this groundwater to get in? Um, and then, you know, there, there are liners that can work in pipes, it depends on the scope of the issue. Uh, there's smoke testing that can be done, I mean, there are all sorts of ways to determine, you know. How is this, because again, what, what we don't want is clean water getting into our system and then. Pushing something through that results in a rate increase to ratepayers. Uh, if we have to adjust S T Cs because we're coming up against some of these, um, then you know, we would do that. With our engineering consultants, but. Generally, the trend is onsite retainage. And then just making sure the H O's are maintaining those, so making sure that the plants that. Are supposed to be in there are, that it doesn't just turn into kind of a bark dust bowl, because that doesn't really drain.
And I will get back to you about our average daily flow, I meant to, you know, I thought of that same question and I forgot to email Chris today.
Jerry, good examples, the one out there by the Seventh Day Venice Church in Campanella, that big open area, that's. I think they got, I think they got like three of them in that area, don't they?
Yeah, and then the, the new uh, the, the newest one up on, on Deuce that um. Someone decided to park a truck in during our ice event. Oh yeah, I just, I, I just, like I said, I was just. I, I, as far as I remember, I mean, I think at least. In the last couple of years, almost the majority of them have.
Okay, just to wrap up really quickly here, a couple of other things, um, I'm working on scheduling a joint meeting that with the. School board and fire board, the fire board has indicated interest in doing that, I think it'll be great. Um, Chief is working with me on this and we've reached out to the schools to, to see, um, you know, how they could schedule that. Um, so we will try to get, I'm aiming for like maybe a Monday night or Tuesday night, I think their meetings are Wednesday and Thursday. And so we'll have to see how everybody's schedule kind of works in, but we'll get as, as much of you together as possible. Um, when we can get something scheduled, so watch for that to come out and then. Um, I want to say thank you for your work at your last, instead of a regular council meeting, we had a workshop with the Planning Commission. Um, and that was great work that evening and as requested regarding the childcare zoning review. Staff is planning a presentation and a listening session that will come up at your next meeting, I think you just got an email today about that. Um, and the survey, I thought it was live, but it sounds like it's going live tomorrow, so if there's anybody listening who wants to uh, give us some input. On their experience with childcare or lack thereof, or what, what might be beneficial. Or how they see that, there's a survey out there and then there's also a request for public comment at the next meeting. Um, the last thing, just real quickly, I wanted to share is the community or the program, um, that's called Community Heart and Soul. Um, was looking, they're looking to expand into the, the West Coast and um. The Ford Family Foundation is very supportive, but they, they kind of do different things, but the Ford Family Foundation is supportive of that. And we've had a couple exploratory meetings with some representatives from the program to find out about what that program would look like here in Estacada. Um, and then on February twenty fifth, there was a gathering of some community members that we tried to pull together, all the council was invited to that as well. Just to see, because it's, it's basically, it's the um. It's the opposite of what, if we go out and try to do um, like a visioning process and we hire a, we'll hire a consultant. They'll do that public outreach, they'll check all the boxes, they'll say, yes, we reached this community or that community or what, and they'll do all the. Things to gather input from the community, but it's still very governmentally based. And this is more of a community-driven grassroots type of a situation, but it takes volunteers. And volunteers are at a premium right now, if anybody has noticed. Um, so I didn't know if it would go anywhere or not, but there was a group at that Saturday morning who was interested in starting to meet monthly and see if there's. Um, a way that they can do it, um, reason, reasons that Estacada could benefit from a program like, like that right now is because we're. Coming out of three years of a very stressful time that has changed a lot of things in our society and in our individualness. And we're Estacada is growing, so how do we connect with all of our new neighbors and then kind of chart our future? Uh, how many, or, we have many organizations, events and commissions that are looking for volunteers and we need to reach them in a way and this program would help with that. And we need to find better ways to communicate. Um, the program identifies or can identify what matters most. And reflect what the, it reflects what the community members love about Estacada, they really try to focus on the positive. Um, about what, what do you like about Estacada, tell us your stories and so the, this group, um. And thank you, Counselor Procop and Counselor Shrobel for being there and if you wanted to share anything, feel free, but. They're going to try to, the group's going to try to explore what the next steps would be. Um, it's not something that the city or city staff necessarily would be heavily involved in, other than. Supportive and paying attention to what's going on, probably attending some of their events, but they would need the support of the city council. Um, before the, that group would want to, or that program would be allowed to be utilized here. They don't want to do anything that's going to be at odds with the leadership in the community, so um, from what I understand, as this group starts to meet. Um, they'll see where it's going and eventually be bringing it to council to explain what they'd like to do and. See if there is support for that, so. Um, that's kind of an update on that as far as, it's still going, I've, I thought it might just be, that was the last meeting and. People will say, no, you know. I just don't think we have it in us right now, but there's, there's some folks who would like to carry forward and so we'll see where it goes, I guess, at this point. So, and that is my update.
You want to speak on or? Are you okay with what?
I'm fine with what Melanie said, our first meeting, our next meeting is tomorrow, actually.
Where's that at?
At the library, but it's uh.
Same place, floor room.
Yeah, in the floor room.
And just the, uh, what, what uh, interests me in it as well to very, this is a very positive. Way to get input from the community, a very inclusive way to get uh, input from the community as well too, it's been in. In place already for what, twelve years or so, um, but this is a program that's going to last for roughly two years. So it's got a, a beginning and an end, we will be looking for quite a few volunteers if this thing moves forward. Volunteers from the community are, are what's going to make this thing happen.
Mm-hmm, correct.
What time is it tomorrow?
Five P M.
Yes, and I don't think it's public.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I'm just.
It's not, it's not public, it's just representatives and stuff, so I'll be there.
That's all, oh yeah, no?
That is all I have for my report tonight.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. Um, moving along, we are at council business, the first thing on council business is uh, committee appointments and there's a lot of committees here. I'm in agreement with everyone just staying, I, I, you want to go through each committee and then we can just say.
Let's see, how should we do that?
Okay. Okay, so start at the top.
The, do you have the pages that have the um. Each committee highlighted, that second page of the um, staff report?
Let me get that.
And it's page fifty nine, sixty?
Starts on fifty nine.
Okay, so page sixty. Or I could just read them all.
Yeah, just read them all, then let's go with that.
Okay, all right, first of all, so we have the Estacada Area Arts Commission has three vacancies. Um, two may be filled by residents living within the school district boundaries and one vacancy must be filled by a resident living within Estacada. Um, we received three applications, Maddie Miller, Mike Anderly and David Solheim. That meet the required, the requirements of these vacancies and the Arts Commission discussed applicants and recommended them to be appointed.
Good, and, and that sounds good, is everybody comfortable with that? Do we need to mo- a motion on each of these? Yeah, consensus.
Okay, okay. All right, and then we have the Estacada Budget Committee, which has four vacancies. Um, all of these vacancies must be filled by qualified electors living within the city limits, Estacada city limits. And we had just only two applicants received, one from Brent Dodger and one from Justin Gates. And then there will still be two vacancies left after those appointments.
Uh, yeah, so I wanted to, this is the point, we talked a little bit about the, um, we had made a. Uh, change to the budget uh committees versus other committees during the previous meeting. I went back and checked and we didn't give direction on that if we, it's supposed to be done immediately or not, so that, this is where we, I should just determine that. My intent when I brought it up was for it to be effective immediately when um, that, meaning this year. If there's any conflict, we deal with those now for the budget committee versus other committees and there's only one conflict. Um, was on, that's on the Planning Commission and on the Budget Committee and that was.
Vincent, Vincent is on Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, I'm sorry.
And he's on uh, the Budget Committee and neither of those terms are up this year and so. And the other, we had a couple of other people that.
Yeah, but they, they fell off, so.
One of the, their positions were up, so they weren't allowed to reapply for both, but Vincent was, his terms are up. So I, if you want to interpret, if you want to provide interpretation of what the intent was. Do we need to require him to resign from one of those or is that, does he finish out his terms and then?
Well, did Dodger follow that procedure, didn't he go off Parks and Rec and actually start up on?
Because his term makes his terms, his, the terms were expiring for Brent.
That's why we did all.
Right, and, and for Denise Carey, she was on two and her terms were expiring.
Two out of the three have actually followed that, I think it's a good idea just to have. Uh, we, we, we set it forth so that we can, the intent of time was to basically make it so we're going forward, we don't have that conflict. I think it's a good idea to have them choose one or the other and then we point to Phil.
I do, I do hesitate to ask somebody to resign from a.
Uh, he, he gets to choose, but the thing is, it's, like I said, I think it's in the middle of his term or not. We, we passed it because that way the conflict won't be there going forward and keep that balance going forward.
When it, when is this term on, term on Parks and Rec up? And also, and also budget, yeah.
Just want to chime in, I don't think that it's accurate that, that two of the three followed that, um, their, their terms were up, so from that standpoint. You know, there was no, no midterm leaving of a post, um, I don't know, my, my, my thought is here, if I, if I may continue. Um, my thought here is that uh, we, we'd never talked about kicking a person off of a committee. Hey, I would rather them allow them to follow through their term. Uh, my, that's, that's my thought, but I'm open for consensus here.
Those are something you add to that.
Uh, I was going to say, I, I just disagree that they, I think they did follow it, they just chose not to. Uh, you know, I think they would have followed it either way, um, whether they're in the middle of term, but that's just my view, I mean, we got differing views on that one.
Were their terms up or? Okay, so they finished out their terms after we had already discussed, okay.
And they had to choose which one they run for, so I think leaving one person would be an unfair balance, everybody else that's coming for committees.
Twenty twenty five for the Budget Committee and twenty twenty four for the.
So next, one more year for Parks and Rec and two more year for the budget. So when he felt, when he is, he times out on his term next year for Parks and Rec. Then he would have to decide, he wouldn't be able, he wouldn't be allowed to reply for anything else unless he dropped off budget. According to this, I mean, that's how I would typically interpret it, but.
Oh. I interpret it from the way that it was.
I interpret it from the way that it was discussed, that he wouldn't even be able to reapply for Parks and Rec because it's one year. You, you have to, from the way that it was, the Joel phrased it, you can't be on another board or commission for one year, one calendar year. One fiscal year, I don't know, but after you've served on the budget committee, so.
Yeah, well, you're not approving the budget that you'll be spending.
Oh, you couldn't be on the budget committee and then drop off that and get appointed to another committee.
Yeah, that way you're not approving the budget that you'll be spending. So.
You know, I, I think at this point, you know, we've already made a, a ruling that we keep with this. I think, you know, narrowing it down to this and starting off like that would probably be the best bet. Instead of leaving somebody a year on there. I mean, a lot happens in here, we all know.
So you want me to request Vincent's resignation from one or the other of the committees? Is that what the full council or consensus or a majority of the councils asking me to do?
Maybe just a show of hands. Who wants him removed?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering how, I'm trying to remember exactly how that was read and the, when we went, do you have that handy when we made that decision?
November fourteenth is the, is the time when we, when we passed, and I watched the video on it, so.
All the particulars.
Or we could look at that, just what the code says. Is it in the code yet?
This will be the only time that this will be an issue is this time right now will be the only time that this particular issue will come up because moving forward, you know, that we won't have this, if we don't have this problem. So this will be the only one. And I, I just, I mean, I, I, I say he's got one more year left on Parks and Rec. You know, I just feel let him, let him service, let him serve out his term. That's how I feel, you know?
My thought is just a clean, clean slate moving forward. We're not trying to juggle this at the end of the year and have one more person that's on there. We just plain slate move forward, but.
Did, did anyone approach the two people that just let their terms roll out and asked them to resign? Immediately?
They didn't have to, they, they were up.
Because I think we had the meeting in November and their terms were, they were finishing them out in December.
Gotcha. So it was just the next month that they.
Yeah, they just kind of finished out and.
No, the terms ended in March.
Yeah, they, they.
Oh, oh, yeah, I see, right. I'm sorry.
So it was decided in December, their terms were up in March?
Yes.
I think it would be, if, if we didn't go to the other two people and ask them to resign, I don't think it would be fair to go to the other person with a term with a year left. And, and I didn't really think about it at the time when we were passing it. That restricting, I like the idea of having the separation there. But I think we should have treated all, if there was conflicts and we were concerned with it, the fair way would have been to address it if we were wanting it to go immediately. To address it with anyone that had those conflicts at the time and ask all of them to resign immediately if that was our intent, but to let it go three months and then have one person left. I don't think that that would, to someone that's wanting to serve the community, I don't think that's a very fair approach from us.
I just want to, to be clear, did we ask people to choose at that point, or did they just like Brent or, or who Denise, or did they just voluntarily not choose?
We always send out a reminder for the people who have terms expiring, that if they want to reapply, they need to reapply. And I didn't receive an application from Brent for Parks and Rec or from Denise for budget.
Okay.
So I just didn't receive those.
Okay, so what I'm getting from all this is consensus is leave as is and let him run his full term on the parks. And then from that point on.
And this is our only person that we've run into the, okay.
So everybody's comfortable with that? Okay, moving forward.
Okay, so in that case, Budget Committee, we had two applicants for four positions. Justin Gates and Brent Dodger were the applicants. Is that okay? All right. And then for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Question first.
Yes.
So the, the other two openings, we're going to continue to accept applications for those? Is there a set time or just until we fill the seats?
Until we receive an application and once we do, I'll bring it to you at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
And that's kind of, it's kind of a special committee in that they can't just be a resident of the city. They have to actually be an elector to participate on that. All right, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, we had three vacancies. And we received three applications. Andrea Wallace, Denise Rochdo and Tammy Beatty. And they meet the, the requirements of those vacancies. Okay. And then the Downtown Estacada Commission has three vacancies. We received four applications, but one person then withdrew their application. So we have three applicants currently, Julie Cooper, Lonzo Tackett and Juan Luna. Are those all right to appoint? Okay. Okay. Infrastructure Committee. We had two vacancies and two applicants, Karen Hopta and Ryan Dunn. Departments, okay. And the Library Board has two vacancies. They received three applications. One person did not, was not able to attend for some reason, the meeting where they were interviewing the, we're talking to the applicants. So we, they recommend Courtney O'Byrne and Michael Minch, who are both current members. And then David Solheim, who was not in attendance, they didn't recommend him, but he was just appointed to the Arts Commission. So he will have a commission to participate on. So their recommendation was Mike Minch and Courtney O'Byrne. All right. Parks and Recreation Commission has two vacancies. They're both, they both may be filled by residents living within the Estacada School District boundaries. And they received two applications. Stephen Sheberl, who is a current member, did I say that right? Sorry, I brought Sheberl, and Shirley Burke. And they both meet the requirements for the vacancies. And then lastly, we have Planning Commission. They had three vacancies. They had quite a few applicants. One of those positions is required to be filled by someone who lives within city limits, and they only had one applicant. That is Rick Hawks. He's a current member. And he reapplied and he is the only one that fits that. So Rick would be needing to be appointed for that position. And then there was multiple other recommendations. And you, okay, so you have, okay, so I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, my three recommendations, because we have Rick Cox and Ryan Carpenter was one, Michael Dobbs and Karina Olson.
So just.
Oh, okay. All right. So Ryan Carpenter and Michael Dobbs were my.
Yeah, so I actually saw the conflict with the limited amount of positions and people and where they lived and things. So I actually went and did some investigating on the, on the state statutes. The state statutes actually don't have a limitation on that. I looked under O R S two-two-seven dot zero-three-zero. Nothing on that membership actually requires that we have so many in city or so many in school district or anything else. So my intent was because we could, we have enough people here to fill the positions is that the council would be willing to either change or waive one of those positions to be a, a school district position and allow us to fill the, the planning commission at this point, rather than just leaving one open and hoping someone from the city applies.
Wait, Rick Hawks.
Yeah, but we had just two city positions. There was four positions from what I saw on the website.
There's, there's four, four city positions. And only one of those was coming vacant. And so we just needed one applicant from the city to fill that.
I guess I'm confused then because I looked in the city and four positions are up according to the city website.
Is that in your charter? Is that a requirement in your charter?
It's in our code.
Okay, so if you want to change that, the makeup, then we'd need to schedule public hearing and do it that way. Because you need to amend your code.
All right, so fair enough on that, but the, but is, is it, is it a typo on the website then? Okay, so, okay, so there's three. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, that kind of disabled everything.
That's not on the website.
All right. So I, with as much effort and time and and everything and what, what he, what Ben Wheeler has done for the city of us, huh?
Ben Wheeler's in it.
No, he's not. He's one of the applicants. Yeah, and the, the top three, the top three per the planning commission during their thing were Rick Hawks, Ben Wheeler and Ryan Carpenter. So I would hate to go against what, you know, the, like I said, what Ben Wheeler has done for the city of Estacada and you know, what he, what he has done on that planning commission has been, you know, outstanding and amazing. So I would like to go with Rick Hawks, Ben Wheeler and Ryan, Ryan Carpenter.
I would agree with that.
Well, my recommendation is still on the floor, so I'd like to have a vote on that first before.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna give a motion on that in a second, but I wanted to go into discussion real quick on that. With, with Ben Wheeler, the, my, my thing with Ben Wheeler is this, he's been on for twelve years, like Dykes, he's done a lot of great service. I don't disagree with that. But I think it's time that we allow some other people to come in here, some new people to be on the commission. Ben Wheeler served twelve great years. Let's let some new people come in. Rick Cox, I think is still somewhat new, so he's, you know, I think he's going into his second term, right? This is second or third term? He has no.
I don't know how.
I, I think it's a second term. I think I'm talking, yeah. So, I mean, it's new people, new blood, give them a chance to kind of get in there, some experience for people to learn from. And the second part was, I look at how they did their point system and their rating system. Highly don't agree with it. And the reason why is this. Two of the people that voted, that put that point system together were part of the team that put it together, they voted for themselves. Kind of unethical, in my, my opinion. You don't rate and score yourself. You let someone else score you and rate you and decide if what kind of points system you get. I think that they going about that route was, that's not right. I mean, it'd be like, hey, what kind of review you're going to give yourself? I'm going to give it up a ten. Let someone else do it. Let Jerry rate me or let someone else rate me. It doesn't make sense, but that's not the way it happened according to what I read. There was four of them.
In the election?
Huh?
Did you vote for yourself in the election?
Sure, I voted for myself in the election, but that's much different. That's sixteen hundred people did that versus four. And they're giving themselves their own rating. So what I'm saying here is the, it, it seems in this case, it doesn't make sense to go off the pointing, just go off what we know about them, their, what's in their applications and discuss that. But I think it's a good point to get somebody new on, on there that has ability. He's had three terms. Let's give someone new on there, rather than putting the same people back on there. So that, that's why I support Mayor Drinkwine's recommendation for the three, because it gives a chance to have some turnover and some change. And so I'll make a motion to appoint the three that Mayor Drinkwine recommended.
We have a first on the floor. Do we have a second? No second? All right, done. So Jerry's recommendation is Rick Cox, Ben Wheeler and Ryan Carpenter. So.
So moved.
It's moved. Okay, moving second in all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There you go.
Any.
Yeah, my, my votes can be enough.
That finalizes the appointments for now.
Okay, great. Moving right along, we have council business. And we have Resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero seven. A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement for the lending of personnel within Clackamas County when personnel are unable to get to their normal reporting location.
Okay, and this I would like to nickname the Stranded Worker I G A because that was a mouthful in the actual resolution title. And it is a, it's a resolution and then, or it's an I G A that the city managers of Clackamas County have worked on to have just another tool in our toolbox in case of an emergency where if, for instance, something happened, if we couldn't get to work, it'd likely be some kind of an earthquake or something like that. But if there's workers that are stranded at a particular location, say they're at work and they, I mean, they're at home and they can't get to work, that they could report to a different jurisdiction and make themselves available for an assignment. And this could be helpful, I think especially for us because we, most of our employees live in the local area. Others do not, like other cities, they might have, I heard that, like, like Oswego, maybe ten percent of their employees actually live in the city there. So we would be, the way we would benefit from it is if other employees couldn't get to their work, they could show up here. If we needed C D L drivers, C D L licensed drivers or building inspectors, something like that, we could pull them in through our E O C and we'd appoint them. We'd have this structure to to work off of. And it's a preset agreement on how it would work. So that is, it's not really a risk, it's just another tool. But that would be up to you if you want us to participate with, in a program like this.
Okay, you've all heard what the program consists of. My question is on that, would a county person coming into our area and if they were put on the job here, would they, depending on their ranking or what they do for the county, override the government and the people that are in the city in any fashion?
I would say, oh, go ahead.
No. No, I mean, you, you'd have the discretion to use them or not. So I think the idea is in the event of a natural disaster and I think the first place I saw this was on the Oregon coast. Because of the different elevations, like in a tsunami event, some cities are going to take it a lot worse than others. That there'd be kind of that confluence of employees in one jurisdiction, they could report and whether they were assisting that jurisdiction or theirs. It, it was more of a coordinated group people together, coordinate them. Here, maybe something like a wildfire, maybe that could, it could be that sort of scenario or an earthquake, but yeah, it, it, the overarching goal is, I mean, particularly building inspectors, if you're having to inspect structures to see if they're safe or not, that, to get to the closest city they can get to and you know, if they can't get across the river, they're not going to get across the river, so.
Yeah, yeah. And then something else that I want to add to, if the court goes any further, is I noticed during the fire that county and everybody else was evacuated on stage three. Whereas people like you and me that had investment here or homes here, we stuck around. Would the county be under that countless, say there's a wildfire again, like you just said, would they be required to leave because of the, the evacuation? In that case?
No, I mean, if I was on the phone a bit during the, during the fire with staff and, and as, as it was told to me, C C F D one was telling people, you need to get out. And they were saying, I'm going to get on this stover and cut a fire line. And you know, my advice to the city administration is that that's their, that's their right. I mean, they, they had not been, there are, had the governor declared an emergency and ordered people out and had there been penalties for the city for not facilitating that, and it's not like we're going to drag people out anyway. But then we'd say, no, we're required to tell you to leave. But ultimately, it's on. Ultimately, it's on them.
But for staff, we wouldn't require staff to stay in a level three evacue. I wouldn't want to require staff to stay. Although we did have one staff who did stay because the water plant had to continue to run. So he did stay around the water plant, although the fire was just over the hill and behind his house as well. But ordinarily, for staff, we would regroup elsewhere.
And that's your, your, you have to measure the harm and, okay, if you just abandon all your facilities, that creates public safety issues as well. So I mean, that, that person made their own determination. And we didn't have a problem with that. As long as people understand the risk. We ask that people try and stay safe.
Yeah, I was also on the ground when that all happened and there was no city staff to go to anywhere. There was no calling area. I was doing it all by myself out here, so I have a tendency to not believe that scenario so much so. But that's okay. I'm the only one in the room, so chill.
All right, so I, I had a lot of interaction with the county. I was here, helped run the relief center. I, I have a very good input on what to deal with county, whether the evacuations and who is available. Mayor Drinkwine was the only one. I think former counselor Dunsmere stopped by once or twice and then she left the area. And I think at some point, Council Strobel stopped by, I think, for a couple of days to do some insurance stuff. So, but. for a couple of days to do some insurance stuff, so, but uh at the time, there there wasn't any staff in the area. I was on the phone with uh former city manager Denise Carey, trying to get some information and things out, but one thing I would definitely was not impressed with was the county. They provided us some resources and the EOC did some things on there, but communication and actions of it, definitely not, was not impressed with it. There's a lot of other things I I wasn't impressed with, but that's one of them, so that's my biggest concern, first of all, top of my list was how they performed during an actual emergency, and what's that gonna mean for for us here if we have the staff here that's under that type of training, that type of understanding? That's the first piece. Second thing is, we have ways that we do things here in the city, and I can see where Mayor Drinkwine's concern was. We have ways, we do things, we have actions we take, they're not gonna be trained in those, they're not gonna understand all those, and they're not gonna learn them. So they're gonna default back to what they got trained in and work with on the county level, and that's the type of that's the type of actions they're gonna take unless they get specific directions. So there's there's that piece. Um second one is um the, based on your description there, you said that staff could go work in other places, so it sounds like the benefits, it'd benefit the county in other ways, but for us, you also said that most of our staff lives in this area, so I see it come more of like a one-way benefit somewhat on there, and the uh and my thing is, if we're in a maybe a major earthquake and we've knocked out bridges and stuff, the chances of county getting out here is very slim to none versus if our own people can't get out here, so I don't see the benefit there on that one. I I'm all about wanting to try to increase our ability during uh during emergencies, because I think we need to have those resources in place, I think we need to need to have plans. I just don't see the direct benefit to putting agreement together with the county when
It's not with the county, actually.
Who, it's who's it was, because I thought, that's what I read, it was with the county.
It's Clackamas Cities, the county is included in that, but it's not just with the county, and it's not having the county, I could explain why, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just want.
No, no, I, so, okay, even when, even if we include other cities, the next closest city we have is
And a lot of them may live out here in our area.
So.
So like, an example, is there a large number of police officers that live in Ridgefield, Washington? Um just, I know because I've been to Ridgefield, Washington meetings, so in the event of like a major earthquake or something, those people wouldn't be able to get, in all likelihood, would not be able to get across the interstate bridge, so the question, like, like as we was mentioning, only ten percent of their employees live there, so they live somewhere else, so you can always say no, and say, in the event of a natural disaster, we wouldn't want we wouldn't participate in this. One way to look at it is like, what's the net? So if if your employees live here, this is where they're going to report. If Mulala employees live here, Sandy employees live here, Happy Valley, probably, there's probably some Happy Valley employees that live here. You know, you might end up with more staff, you might end up with more building inspectors. Um just because building inspectors tend to my experience, they they live out where they have a little acreage.
And I want to clarify, you said we might end up with more staff, I I think it might be more appropriate, we might end up with more opportunity to tap in to staff.
Right, so you might end up with more, I guess the best way to put it would be public employees. So the building inspector for some city in the metro region could very well live here. Um and so they might not live in the city of Portland. So the question then becomes if they reported or are available, then your staff would decide whether to utilize them or not. But this would give us kind of that ability.
So I I think this is a positive um thing, I applaud the city manager group for putting this together, I I think this would be great for Estacada to be a part of this um as well as the other cities within Clackamas County, I think this is a very forward-thinking um plan, and and I think it'd be great if we could be a part of it.
Um so I guess I I didn't realize the other cities were there, so I I that kind of changes my perspective a little bit. Couple questions off that. One, we do, if the others, if we have the agreement in place, do other staff need to are we required to take them, to allow them to come in and work?
No, eh the the idea is, in the event of an emergency as on an as-needed basis, I mean, if it's more, if it's more work for our staff to direct these people than it is to just say, hey, go home, then they're gonna tell them to go home. But again, with something like building inspectors after an earthquake, if they all live out here, and no, I mean, not all of them are gonna live here, but we might have some, you might have some net gains that add to efficiency.
I had the second part of my question. Is with, they come in, is there a cost to it? Do we have to pay their salary if they're working out here?
Yeah, we do, we would arrange that, we don't pay them, like, we don't hire them on as an employee, but in the agreement, um we would there would, we would pay the city that they came from um to reimburse them for the time that they're working for us. So we wouldn't need to track their hours and things like that.
So I know, I know you mentioned police, but um does, so, and Melanie mentioned Clackamas County cities, but I know we have a lot of uh uh Multnomah County, there's a few Multnomah County police officers that live in Estacada. Um and I, fire wasn't mentioned, but I know there's a, there's a few Clackamas Fire employees that were, that live in Estacada. Um so would those be included in?
They wouldn't necessarily be included in this, because they would probably report to law enforcement or um fire, which we don't manage. So we would be looking for um the folks that would fill in with our our city responsibilities.
Okay.
I still, I agree with uh Paul, I think this is a a benefit, not a detriment to the city, so.
Yeah, I can see the benefits to it, I still have my concerns, but I can see, because we're not forced to take anything, so.
We can always say no, we'd be, we would be cautious if there was, um or if we felt like we had you know, said yes to someone, got them going, and then they were insubordinate or something, we would not.
When they come in, they work for you.
Right.
Everybody comfortable with that? Alright, so let's, you need a vote on this, right?
Yes, please.
So let's uh put a vote forward, can I have a a motion on the floor?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven, what was your shortened term, Melanie?
Stranded worker IGA.
Stranded worker IGA.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, the next on our list is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, a resolution authorizing placement of stop signs on northeast Shafford Street at second, northeast second avenue and northeast Carroll Street.
Okay, so according to the city code, um by a resolution, the city council can implement um location of traffic control devices, and it had become apparent, I felt fairly confident that the majority of folks were um looking at a a positive um decision to put stop signs back on Shafford. It was um back in, it was about twenty eighteen nineteen, when we redid that street, we engineered them for um speed humps versus the stop signs, and that's when, that's when the stop signs were taken out after that project. Um but by a resolution, um if you feel that they need to go back in, we can do that, there's one um going north on Shafford before you get to Carroll, that speed hump is relatively close to that intersection. And so we'll have to, if you want to um recommend the stop signs, then we would keep an eye on that, make sure it's not causing a problem, or I'd have to, or Dawn might need to check to just verify that we legally can put a a stop sign there, um if we, for some reason we couldn't, I come back to you, I'll let you know. Uh but I just, I didn't realize till today how close that speed hump was to the intersection, but um anyway, if you have discussion or questions.
What would be the concern about the hump being so close to, it seems like you'd slow down to go over the hump? What would be the concern about it?
I think if if cars are, uh it's just a standard, so if cars, like, there's two or three cars in line, then they might be sitting on the speed hump, and it might, it would just be awkward when you're driving, I think, but that's not the technical description of it, I'm sure. Uh but, you know, it is, it's relatively low, I mean, I don't think you're gonna have many cars backing up at a stop sign um on Shafford Street, so I'm, that's what I'm thinking, it's not an issue, but I just wanted to point it out.
I just wanted to um share uh something that I saw uh driving on Shafford is uh there were two cars in front of me driving on Shafford, and they went around. You know, they avoided the speed humps, and it was just uh very disheartening to me, and um I would like to see those stop signs put back in place. Even if we have to grind the speed humps out, I mean.
I agree, I was about to just go ahead and and put this motion into into play, I would like to see the stop signs back in on Shafford, there's just way too much foot traffic with kids going down Carroll Street to get to the middle school and the high school, um even, they even go down uh Shafford to go behind to get to the grade school, and people blow down Shafford, and it's and it's kind of an awkward stop when you get to the bottom of Carroll, it's a really steep hill, and sometimes, I know when I moved to that neighborhood, I, there were stop signs in place, and when they took those out, and you would go down to the bottom of Carroll, people weren't realizing the stop signs had been removed, and so many times there have been, you know, near T-bones, so I just think because there's so much traffic with with the buses, with school, transportation, kids. Um yeah, I'd like to see those put back into place.
And and I just want to chime in here too, I'm I'm supportive as well, um but I did want to note that uh the the portion that was in our packet under discussion, that staff will be developing a process to respond to traffic speed complaints in neighborhoods. And I think that's necessary here, this is being recommended by the pub, uh by our traffic and public safety committee, which I think is great, I appreciate them looking into this. And I understand we have a bit of a process already, in that we have uh we measured the traffic as it went through. But looking through those numbers, nothing stood out to me drastically, saying that one needed to be put in there, so I'm glad we're gonna have a plan moving forward that will help guide us uh better for future, future issues.
Sounds pretty positive in the stop sign category, so can I have a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, a resolution authorizing the placement of stop signs on northeast Shafford Street at northeast second avenue and northeast Carroll Street.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Um I'd just like to say, I'm I'm really, really happy that we're putting this in place ahead of the Main Street project. Um just because I know there will be more traffic on um Shafford once the Main Street project gets started.
Okay, we are at the second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, and ordinance granting to Cascadia Utilities uh Inc., a non-exclusive franchise. So, motion on the floor?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. Oh, wait, never mind, I recuse myself.
Okay.
Second.
Second, alright, first and second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Okay. Last on the list.
Wasn't listening.
I have second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two, in ordinance amending chapter three point two O of the franchise agreement of the Escada Municipal Code.
So moved.
At first?
Now I can second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Uh in my head, I already played through the whole the whole process of me recusing myself, it was already done in my head, and then I, yeah, sorry.
Alright, um I am now at the citizen and community group comment part, and I have Brandy Lickie.
What's up, Mike? There we go, okay, cool, um I wrote this I wrote this down so I wouldn't go crazy um and go off topic, so bear with me as I read this, I'm sorry. Um I'm hoping that in the, for the future, the council has goals moving forward that are open, fair, and transparent. I would like to see a push for fairness and accountability for all the committees, um and making um part of doing that would be ma- making application for the committees the same, and doing some research, I've noticed that some of the applications are different. Um and maybe there's a reason for that, we could see reasons for that, but honestly, I think they should all be the same, if you're gonna be open and transparent. Um I also found it pretty disheartening tonight to see that a bunch of people applied for a committee. Um a bunch of new people, when you're asking for people to be involved and wanting volunteers, and you guys went for voting for the same old people. Found that very disheartening to see. Um uh let me find my notes here, sorry, there are many minutes and videos missing from several of the committees, if you go online, you can see there's lots of agendas missing. Packets, videos, minutes missing, it's no wonder people aren't participating or showing interest when that kind of stuff is happening, and when they apply and they're get shot down for somebody who's had twelve years to spend on a committee. Um uh I would love to see some more consistency, um you see a lot of people come complaining online, but they're afraid to come in and speak, there's, I believe there's several reasons for that. Um when grants come out, I think that there should be more communication with all nonprofits in town, without exception. We have some incredible nonprofits in town, um one being the Community Center, they do incredible work with our seniors and Meals on Wheels, they have um side note, they have an open house on Thursday, the sixteenth at six P M, maybe you guys should check that out. Uh the American Legion is a great support to our veterans who support and who basically deserve everything we can give them. Um the Food Bank works tirelessly to provide nourishment to our community, there's a huge divide in our town, our state, our country. And recent events had highlighted that divide, I urge the council to put a stop to this bullying behavior that's happening in town. I believe it is one of the big reasons community members aren't reporting crimes and issues publicly, we've been seeing that in our committee and other areas, that we're wondering why people aren't reporting things. One of the reasons, I believe, is because they're seeing what happens when things are reported, when issues are reported. Um when they are brave enough to come and speak, then they're shot down. A community member should never be afraid to come and speak, because they don't want the backlash that comes along with going against the status quo. I thank you guys for your time, appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
We are now at the mayor and council reports and comments, so I will start with you, Mike.
Like to thank everybody for coming. I've heard I've heard it come up several times about um people being, not being able to report crimes, or not feeling like things that would be done about it. And I'd really like to just try to encourage anyone that's listening to, I think the council could do more about things that are reported that don't get handled, because then it would be documented, it's really hard to be in a position, and I'm not trying to defend the sheriff's office in this, it's just really hard to defend somebody's feelings, or to to make an argument against how someone feels about doing something, but if they report it, nothing's done about it, then we can enforce that with them, and so I would just really encourage you, you can't really have a a solution to someone's emotions, or or how they feel about what possibly could happen if they possibly did do it, but you can enforce something that gets reported and nothing gets done about, if there's multiple things happening and it's documented, that puts law enforcement in a position to to defend their inactions or their actions, whatever it may be. And so I would just really encourage everyone to give it a shot, i- if you were discouraged in the past from reporting things, I would really encourage you to please just report everything that needs to be reported so that we have that information documented, so and and then that's something that we can enforce. But to continue um attacking the sheriff's office for for people not reporting something, because it's just really hard, I I don't know, like, I was trying to think of if I was in Lieutenant Mendoza's position, how I would, how I would defend my position against someone saying that, I I couldn't really come up with an argument for against somebody's emotions, or or how they felt about reporting it, where if um if there were a bunch of crimes reported that weren't being taken care of, I wouldn't want to be in his shoes in that position, and so I just want to encourage everyone, and I'm not being dismissive of what you were saying um Ms. Licky, I just saying, I I've heard it a lot of times, and I just really wish that we had more things reported that um that we had documented, that there was no activity on, that we could, that we could address.
Well said, I I second that. Um and then just, nothing further, just thanks for the great discussion and the progress tonight as well too, and for staff for getting us prepped and ready for tonight.
I have a few things to say, um first of all, uh taking into consideration some of the, what you guys had said earlier about with Vincent and that, um I think you guys are right, uh I was kind of going hard after getting him uh pushing that air mainly because I like the claim, claiming as a simple cutoff, but you guys have a point, you have someone that wants to serve that is serving, and I didn't take that into consideration, so I want to openly apologize to Vincent if he hears this, for not taking into
You have someone that wants to serve that is serving, and I didn't take that into consideration, so I want to openly apologize to Vincent if he hears this uh for not taking into consideration that you are someone who is serving. That wants to serve and is there, so um I wish you luck on the rest of the um rest of your term, so. Um, as regarding the uh. The sheriff's office that you said, I I get what you're saying, I I actually agree, if things aren't reported. Um, if things are reported, it's hard to do it, but at the other side of that. I can, I can understand because I talked to some of the people that are concerned about it. And it's, there's not just simply, some of it's not just. Fear that they're not gonna do something, it's fear of how it's handled and how they may be portrayed because maybe they have. Some of the things have had history with law enforcement. And um if you kind of go, I'm going from there, and so therefore it's, there there's more of a fear of, hey, I'm gonna report this, I can't do anything, they're not gonna take me seriously. And I think the their their repair on that is we, the city can do everything we can to encourage them, but it really comes down to. The law enforcement to find a way to. Repair that with the, with with the um with the community and give them the sense of confidence and I don't. We can help by putting enacting ordinances or trying to move barriers, but. You know, the really, the work comes down, it's between the the citizen and the law enforcement agent and. That's, that's what needs to be repaired and we, as a third person, I don't think, I don't see how we can actually repair that one-on-one relationship. And I think that's something takes time, takes work and for the sheriffs to show that they can have, the citizens can have confidence in them. By this actions and I think this can take times, they they've been made aware of it now. And so now it's on them to do what they can to try to show. And maybe that means that they have to be overly pres- presenting themselves as they do things. Hey, you know, we've, we're on Estacada, we we had to report of X and we took care of it by this way. Like they do share things on their their Facebook page, those are some things they can do, but I really, I think it's between law enforcement and the citizens to. They work on that one and I'm happy to support them in any way we can. Um, I've talked to some this the other day, I said, hey, if you guys have problems, let me know, I'll do what I can to support you from this, from a council member or bring it to the council to. Block uh to remove barriers. I've worked with Melanie on trying to remove, I think it was a parking barrier that they had and I brought that up to the council. And we got that removed, so there's, there's things that I'm willing to do, just I think it's really on them, so I don't want to, you know. I I don't, I don't want to let that go by. Um, the other thing is uh Melanie uh ear- earlier, I was pretty front forth about um. Some views and things and I I was pretty hot about it, but I think I I should have brought that to you on an independent level, so I apologize for publicly calling you, I like that, it wasn't appropriate. And I think we can, we can work on that on a more private level, but I do want to publicly apologize, whether, whatever comes through that email. It was not the appropriate way for me to approach that. We have a, we have things, I could have brought that up in a different venue and I apologize for that, so. Um, but other than that, I uh, I I have everything else for the day and I I hope, thank you for everybody's for attending and. Those who attended that were seeing that they're gonna get appointed, I'm sorry you guys didn't get appointed, uh, I think Kim was in the audience here and Mike, so. And uh, please apply for another uh, another um position, I'm sure there's, there's lots of things open out there, we can try to get you on, so. Uh, thank you, staff, as always, amazing job, uh, thank you guys for showing up. There are two open positions on the budget committee. To, you know, get those applications in, it's a, you know, it's only one meeting a year, but it's still an important committee, so. Uh, I I'd like to say that I agree with uh what Councilor McElroy said. Um, Clackamas County is very, very good about their, if you look at their site, they're very good about their statistics and their spreadsheets and their graphs and. Everything, but um the only way that those numbers reach that website, reach the, you know, reach those. Graphs and spreadsheets as if the, if if stuff is reported. Um, being one of the few of us on this council that was here during the last uh time we switched. Um, when we switched from Sandy to Clackamas County, um, a lot of the issues that are brought up now are very similar issues that. You know, were brought up during that, you know, before that switch that um that residents and community members had with uh Sandy Police, so. Um, I really think that we, you know, that that. It does need to be addressed, the the people need to feel, they need to have trust in the police force, um, and I don't know how we get to that, get back to that point. But um I think that that is something that needs to be addressed, but you know, in the meantime. Um, you know, we as a council can't help the community if the stuff is not reported because we don't see this, if it if it's not reported. You know, it it's not reaching, you know, it's not reaching anything that we get our eyes on. You know, so we we definitely, you know, would highly recommend if there's something that needs to be reported, whether it's an emergency or non-emergency. There are avenues for it, um, it just, I I can only just ask to report it. Um, thank you all for being here, hopefully I was uh semi-pleasant tonight, hopefully I didn't offend anybody, uh, thank you very much.
Um, I don't have anything to add, thank you so much, everyone.
Um, I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's um comments. Uh, Mrs. Licky, I appreciate your comments tonight and um thank you for bringing some things to light and. Um, I also want to just um, and and Joel, I think it's great that you, you know, you you come up here and. I think it it takes a lot of humility and courage to say, hey, I apologize for this or, you know, um, maybe I should have taken a step back or whatever and. I mean, you know, how often do we do that and to do that publicly, I I do, I do commend you for that, I think that's awesome and. You know, whether you're right or wrong or whatever, um, it's, it's great. Um, for the sheriff's office stuff, I mean, I have my own bias, but. Um, I think one of the issues is just people kind of not knowing like how approachable law enforcement can be. And so they kind of, they put on a uniform and people are like, eh, I don't really want to approach them or I don't trust them, but. They're, they're pretty just normal people, like they go grocery shopping and they do their lives and they're pretty normal people, but I think like one. Solution or some sort of thing that we can maybe look at doing in the future is having some sort of um. I'm trying to think of like public functions where law enforcement can be present and then not be so. Um, have it be more of a. Maybe not have them on duty or have some off-duty kind of mixers or something, so when they're on duty, they're on duty, so it's kind of like having. It's kind of like having a um, what do you call it, like a service dog, right? And the service dog, they always say like, don't pet, because like my service. So when they're on duty and their their radio's on and stuff, they're kind of like a little bit distant, but if you have some off-duty. Maybe some sort of like mixers with the public or something like that, um, that way the community could get to know. The law enforcement that is serving because we do have, is it four, is it four full-time? Right now. Um, and the S R O, I mean, the S R O is in the community a little more just because they are in the schools, but. Um, you know, that way maybe it can present some opportunities for people to just sort of. Get to know who their local law enforcement is, that they're just average people and you know that they are a little bit more approachable. And maybe not have it be so guarded, but that's just a thought. Um, other than that, um, good discussion tonight, everybody, I appreciate everything that people brought to the table and. Melanie, thanks for the Friday phone calls and the updates, I appreciate it and answering my questions and. Um, it was good discussion tonight, guys, thanks.
I think you had great speeches from everyone. I don't have anything but one thing. Thank you for sitting in that audience. Thank you for coming to these meetings, whether they're hot topic or not. Thank you for making the effort to speak. On your behalf to us, let us know how you feel, let us know what's bothering you. We appreciate you. And we work hard to make sure that your city is safe to live in and that you go home every night to your families and. Everything's go pathetic, so we appreciate you, thank you, we appreciate staff for showing up and we appreciate Peter, who I have seen more in the last. Couple of weeks and I've seen all year.
Could I do a final pitch for reporting? Because it's just critically important, so. If we know that crimes are happening between one and three in the morning or midnight and four, then that impacts when. Um, when, how much staffing people put on it. So if for no other reason, e- even if you don't think that someone will follow up. Just having those raw numbers allows the city to work with the sheriff's office to make decisions so that the officers that serve us can have the largest amount of impact. And so for, if for no other reason, if people would be willing to do it for that reason, it would be great. And you know, obviously we at want people taken care of and feeling safe, and one of the ways to do that is to know when the bad actors are acting.
That's good, thank you. All right, I'm gonna close the city council and I'm gonna reopen for executive session. Uh, can I get a script uh on the executive section read? I will read. The script. The Estacada City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of evaluation of the city manager. An executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two. Point six six zero, which allows the council to meet in executive session to review and evaluate. The employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body. Representative of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience or online. Um, are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberation during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to the open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Right?
Just to clarify, we have one person who is a member of the news media. Um, who would stay. But then the other folks who are viewing this would need to leave. And that's difficult because I hate to kick them out because they won't know when to come back in, but that's how that would work, right?
Yeah, that's how that would work.
Okay. So. Yeah, so if you're on viewing online, but you're not a member of the press, of the official.
What is the the media?
Estacada News. Yeah, so she would be allowed to remain if you would like. For the others, um, we'll ask you to go ahead and close out of the meeting. And if not, and we could, we could help, yeah, we could help with that. Okay, and then if they. Okay, so we'll stop recording.
And we will open the city council back up and I will have a motion on the floor to proceed with the step. For Melanie's performance.
Move to approve. Granting Melanie one step. Please go.
First and second, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, thank you, everyone, and this meeting is.